Welcome, everyone. The hour being 7:00 PM on October 19th, 2022. The Tuilla City Council's meeting in a business meeting being held at the Tuilla City Hall Council Chamber is located at 90 North Main Street. This is also being streamed electronically on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We will start with our first item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and repeat after me.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is a roll call. Councilman Graff?
Present.
Councilman Hanson?
Present.
Councilman McCall?
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady. I'm also present, and Councilwoman Manzio is asked to be excused from this meeting. We'll move on to item three, which is an update on the Victims of Crime Act, the Voca Grant Report presented by Valen Matson, the Victim Advocate.
I introduce myself. So for any of you who don't know me, I am the Court Victim Advocate for the Tuilla City Police Department, Valen Matson. The Tuilla City Police Department Advocacy Program serves many individuals and families in our community. The past six months have been very busy. We have helped over 300 victims. 255 of those have been new victims. The majority of these cases continue to be domestic violence and child abuse. We have assisted 66 individuals and families with orders of protection, including child protective orders, stalking injunctions, and adult protective orders. The advocacy program has assisted victims with resources for food, housing, rental assistance, and funeral expenses. As Court Victim Advocate, I also get to work as a liaison between the victims, the prosecutors, and the law enforcement. I have the privilege of working with survivors throughout the court proceedings and to see their struggles and strengths throughout the process. I wish you could all be there in court with us when a survivor gets up and presents their victim impact statement. I'm sure you've seen just how powerful those are. It's such a neat experience to see the courage that these people have that they're able to get up there, and I know that has a great impact on the courts as well. So with that, we are very grateful again to have our police department with the advocacy office where we can invite people into a safe, clean, friendly environment where they can meet with us and we can go over these resources with them. We are so grateful for your support and the support of the law enforcement and the attorneys. Do you have any questions for me or want any more information?
Just a brief comment. Last week, I had a jury trial and had a 12-year-old victim, and she was intellectually disabled, and she functioned at a four-year-old level. And I had a chance to watch our victim advocate in Utah County work with her and make it possible for her to find a safe space to be able to tell her story. And what you guys do, and what she did is what you guys do, and I'm very grateful, always grateful, for what you do because that is, that is an amazing work that you do. So, thank you.
You're welcome. With that, just last week, I had kind of a similar experience. An autistic boy, he was 16, who couldn't go up by himself to the pulpit and give his statement. So, I was able to stand next to him and read it for him. That was really neat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Council members, I just want to quickly say that tomorrow night, there will be a candlelight vigil at the Veterans Memorial Park, beginning at 6:00 PM. And you will hear from some survivors of domestic violence. And then there will also be a memorial held for those that have lost their lives in our community, unfortunately, to domestic violence, if you would like to attend that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item four, which is an update on the Small Business Development Center presentation. This is presented by Jess Clifford, the SBDC Director for the Tuilla Region.
Thank you. Holly, if we could go to the first slide. Thank you very much. I'm really excited to be able to report to you our activity at the Small Business Development Center. And first of all, to thank you for your support to our center. And your ongoing support has made a great deal possible. We've worked very hard to bring impact to the city. But I also hope that in the course of this report, you'll see some of the impact we've been able to make to individuals here in the city and to the businesses that they're attempting to run. Go to the next slide, actually, one back. Just as a quick rundown, we have 65 clients served this year. And I want to reiterate that that's to date. So, we're still counting between now and December. Of that, there were 130 counseling hours rendered, and that's of 73 sessions. And then we facilitated 339 training hours to business owners. And that was done also with partnership with Tuilla City to be able to bring that training here. This is beyond the COVID training that we did during the pandemic to help in that recovery effort for businesses to get going that had had to shut down. And this is additional training. Most of it has been in marketing and in digital marketing. And so, we've been able to bring in some experts to do that, and that's been very successful and well-attended. And then, to date, we have $850,000 in cash infusion. This would constitute grants, loans, and sales reported by our clients. I also want to just point out that we have heard from about 19% of our clients so far that we survey to get these numbers. So, I'm really hopeful that this number just kind of represents the tip of the iceberg. But it is not a small number, and we're proud of it. So, just to let you know about that. And then, of that number, we know that 500,000 of that was in sales increases here in the city. So, that's a great achievement of our businesses. I wanted to just take a quick minute, too, and to point out some success stories that we've had this year. I know that you're all familiar with these individuals, but I wanted to just make you aware that our 2020 Business of the Year was Simply Bliss. This is Doug and Leslie Webb. They run Simply Bliss from Tuilla Technical College in the cafe there. But they started in Stansbury Park in a mobile unit. And I was really proud of this business and proud to see them awarded because even during the pandemic, they were able to profit and to grow because of the innovative thinking that they had. This business made supplies, storage for food available to people out of their store that they couldn't sell. So, they just went ahead and let people order their supplies and buy that, and did everything that they could to be innovative and to address the needs that people had that they could meet. And so, I just felt like they should be commended, and I wanted to make sure you knew about them. This past year, our Business of the Year was Melanie Skelton from Melanie's Health Nutrition. And I know you all know Melanie. I think it's hard to be in Tuilla and not know Melanie. But she has always been so eager to learn anything she can, participate in anything that's offered, and has worked very hard over the last decade to grow her business. She started out in a garage. She's now in a retail location with full-time employees and hoping to expand. So, we're really proud of her, and we were excited to see her honored. I wanted to point out Paul Gardner also, just as a... This is kind of a typical story. Paul came to our center with an idea. He had been in trucking, in cargo, and noticed that the company that holds the contract with railroads was about to drop their contract and retire. And I was fascinated to learn that in the trucking industry, apparently, when cargo is transferred from a train to its destination, there has to be a contract with a specific carrier that meets specific criteria. You can't just send any truck to the train. And Paul saw that there was about to be a need for this, and so he wanted to know what he could do to fill that gap. And literally was starting with nothing. Today, Paul owns a fleet of trucks, and he's filling that need and is looking, as I interviewed Paul, to find out how he was doing. He's looking to bring nine more trucks onto his fleet. And that's a Tuilla-based business. And it's really exciting to me because I see people like Paul come in, and they have questions like, what's an LLC? And two years later, they're doing what they're doing. And it's just really exciting. And so, I wanted to point him out and have you see that. And then, I'm sure you all saw in the transcript that Smart Asset named Tuilla County as their top-ranked county for small business. And that was determined based on reported income and tax returns and then, and business sales, and income that was generated in the county per capita. So, I was really proud of that, considering the fact that we were measured up against Salt Lake and Utah County and Davis, which are typically the powerhouses of the state. So, I think our small business owners are doing something right, and it's been a real privilege. And I love being able to support them and to help them understand what they need to know. I have tremendous respect for anybody that will run a business. It's not for the faint-hearted, and it's not, it's not what you think it is. Sometimes, we have people come in that they'll say something on the order of, "I quit my job last week. I couldn't take my boss. She got to help me start a business right now." And we have to have that conversation and help them understand that that's not really what we're doing here or what they're in for. So, those are some of the highlights that I wanted to point out. And again, to thank you for your support and entertain any questions that I can answer.
I always like to hear the success stories, so thank you for sharing those.
Thank you.
And thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item five, which is our public comment period. Before we open the time up to the public, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. You state your name into the microphone, and then you sign the paper. That's over here on the counter. Holly will set a timer, and then up on the screen, and it'll say when your time's up. So, we are opening the time up to the public, so please feel free to come up.
Hi, my name is Robert Martin. Sorry for the limp. I had surgery on my knee. Proposing a signage be put up. The area I'm talking about is our secondary water that we have up on Settlement Canyon Road. If you guys know where that is, it's a last road you can turn on to the left going out towards Stockton. And that is our reservoir that we have for our secondary irrigation water for most of the Tuilla City, I believe. The signage we do have up there says, "No swimming, no boating, no tubing." Some of those signs are getting older, but what we're having up there is people camping in the areas that they're not supposed to be camping. There is a road that stops and starts the gate, where they close the end of this month, for camping beyond that area. But before the gate, there's people camping and dumping in that area. So, maybe if we put up some signage saying that there's no camping, no dumping in that area, that they will know that that's illegal. Most people don't. They think it's a free area to... I mean, we do have fishing in there. It's great. But I do worry about maybe people staying too long and where they dump their materials afterwards. Any... And those signs that are up there, maybe redate, update at the same time for no swimming. Any questions?
Can I?
Sure.
I do know, just quickly, the property you're referring to is on the south side of the road, right?
So, the Settlement Canyon Road goes up.
Right.
There is parking area.
Yep, but across the road.
Further back, there is some private area. But on the north side as well, they're camping on the north side and on the private. It's right towards the end. There's a tree. And there's quite a bit of stuff on the ground. The department has had notifications to drive them out of there. I'm guessing some of the things, oh, we didn't know, are furthermore on that. So, if we make it noted to them that they can't camp there, that it is illegal to camp and illegal to dump, it is city property, I believe, still. I'm not sure about where the private ends and where the city owns. So, maybe we can look into that.
I just wanted to mention that the reservoir is owned by Settlement Canyon Irrigation Company, but we work very often with them and regularly. So, we'll talk to them about at least that signage. And then, I'm just trying to look at my map here of what's private property and what is not. But I think even if we work with the private property owners, if they do not want people on their property, they can post that no trespassing. And then we have the ability then to ask for those people to leave. So, we'll follow up on your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On a personal note, my condolences on the passing of your mother, Mayor. Sorry. I'm Nada Parkinson, aka the Cat Lady in town. I feed about 200-plus cats every night at 30 feeding stations all over town and have done so for about 18 years that I've been out here. I try to trap and spay and neuter. I've fixed about 2,000 cats, which does take quite a few kittens off the street over the years. And I'm really concerned... First of all, one question before I forget. People tend to call me if it has anything to do at all with cats or anything else, dogs, whatever. But some people in trailer parks, and I'm encouraging everybody to fix their animals and the ferals. They're the problem in town. They call me because a neighbor trapped their cat that was already fixed, and that animal ends up going to the shelter. And then, the actual owner has to go pay, I've heard, from $70 to $85 to get the animal back out after it has sat there for four or five days. And they have to pay those fees and room and board and what have you. But I just wonder if, and a couple of cats recently were also microchipped. And so, could the shelter staff maybe immediately check for a microchip? And then, if there is one, and they find the owner, maybe not charge them. People in the mobile home parks don't seem to have a lot of money, so some of us just end up paying to get their cats back out. And I'm just wondering if, first of all, they could check for a microchip quickly to see, and then maybe not accrue so many expenses. Just a thought. So, I have not been able to trap. I just trap and try to help people who need help, if they physically or mentally or, you know, age, whatever, cannot trap their own cats, or if they won't, and they just want somebody else to trap and fix them. So, I've done this for many years, along with the ones that I feed every night. And this summer, I haven't been able to do that. And I'm not 100% sure why. And I know things have changed with the TNR policy out here from best friends. But I used to be able to do that. And consequently, not being able to do that this summer, I have many, many litters of kittens that have been born that are now homeless, too. And now, they've got to be fed and at some point taken care of. And I'm just concerned. I don't completely know why. And I know the shelter's overflowing. Every rescue group's overflowing. I get that. And so am I. And I may not be able, may not be able to keep this up much longer due to some health issues. And I don't know what I'm going to do with 200 cats, other than euthanize them all. And I can't bring myself to do that. And so, now there's a lot more out there. And I'm just wondering if there can be any other accommodation. Does that mean my time's up? I guess it does. Sorry. Anyway, to maybe allow me to either help other people who can't do it themselves, or continue what I've been doing in case I can't do this much longer, and/or to somehow just put them all down. But there's a lot of kittens out here right now that don't even have any shelter. And I can feed them, but winter's coming, and they don't have any shelter in certain areas. And with the building going on, I'm being displaced in several areas. And I just honestly don't know what to do about it. I know I can't take them to the shelter. They won't take them. I had a cat in a trap the other day, but they told me they couldn't take him, so I had to let him go, and he needs to be fixed. But anyway, I'm just a little bit unsure as to why I can't do this. But I don't know if there could be any consideration as far as letting me just trap some of these homeless cats. If I have to euthanize them, then I guess that's what I have to do. But try not to do that, so. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll just make sure you sign that paper over there. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to make a comment? Seeing no one else come forward, we will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to item six, which is Resolution 2022-88, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council authorizing the disposal of lost or mislaid personal property. This is presented by Adrian Day, the Chief of Police.
Thank you, Council. We have property at the PD that's taken up a lot of space, no evidentiary value. I believe you have a list in front of you. Title 77, Chapter 24 of the Utah Code stipulates when law enforcement can dispose of lost or mislaid property. We intend to take the bikes and give them to West Valley Fire. They auction them off, and their proceeds go to a burn unit. I believe it's the University of Utah. We've fulfilled the obligation of the statute to, of notifying the owners and publishing notice of our intent. And the last item we have to do is get approval from our legislative body, which is you. And we intend to use the rest of the property for public use. I would be, I see need with the property there. The electrician, maybe parks, the shops. I don't see a lot of need for the PD, but other departments with the city I do. So, if there's any questions, I'd like this approved.
All right. Any questions or comments?
It's noisy.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve Resolution 2022-Dax 88, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council authorizing the disposal of lost or mislaid personal property.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilman Graff. Take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman Graff?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item seven is Resolution 2022-89, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving and ratifying a general consulting agreement with WSRP-certified public accountants regarding the city financial statements for fiscal year '22. Presented by Shannon Wimmer, the Finance Director.
Good evening, Council. You may remember, last year, we actually split our auditing duties. We used to have the same auditing firm provide both our financial statements and the actual audit. As we become a bigger and bigger city, that's been a recommendation from the state auditor that we split those two, those two functions. And so, we started this last year where we retained WSRP to provide for our, they will do our financial statements. And then, we have Larson and Company who will do the actual audit. So, this is just the annual agreement to allow WSRP to continue this work in preparing the financial statements.
All right. Any questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make another motion. I'll just make a motion. We approve Resolution 2022-89, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving and ratifying a general consulting agreement with a WSRP-certified public accountants regarding the city financial statements for fiscal year '22.
All right. A motion from Councilman Hanson, a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman Graff?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady. I also vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item eight is Resolution 2022-90, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council approving a contract with Van Con Inc. for construction of the 2022 Barra Wellhouse and Booster Station. This is presented by Paul Hanson, the City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. This is a project that you're well aware of. It's the development of new culinary water source to help meet the current and future water demands of the city. The City Council previously approved a resolution for the construction of a reservoir at this same location that will be used in conjunction with this Barra Wellhouse. We separated the two projects because they are so close to each other and kind of different contractors and specialty with some contractors that we felt we'd get a better offer to do them separately and let the one get out of the way a little bit. We went ahead and bid this project previously, but only received one bid, and we rejected that bid. We put the project back out for bid and separated out a few of the items. And we now bring to you a resolution to award this contract to Van Con. The project was, previous, was put out for public bid. We have a conditional use permit on the property per city code, and we received three bids back. The lowest responsive responsible bidder was Van Con in the amount of $2,231,000. We are asking for the council to... We are asking for the council to approve that contract. They are the contractor that's actually building the reservoir, so it'll be wonderful to have the same contractor, not having to compete with others for space. And because of, sometimes we find things when we dig in the ground that we don't anticipate. We're asking for an additional 5% contingency in the amount of $111,550. I highly doubt we'll tap into that much, if at all, but ask your authorization to include that should something come up at the mayor's discretion to modify. There's a few pictures if we can. Holly. Again, the location of the project is on the west side of UP Railroad, just opposite Walmart and the apartments there. The next image would show the location of the well house and you can see the circular water tank. They're adjacent to it. For your information, that water tank, the walls are complete. The columns are complete. Inside, you just can't see them because it's all hidden. And they're now working on doing the forming and the shoring to create the deck for that water tank. So this well house will sit adjacent to it along with the construction and access ramp up to the top of the tank for the city crews. The next picture just shows the well house elevations. It's a very simple split face, split face masonry building. And inside you can see somewhat the complexity of the well house in terms of the number of pumps and motors. There's the deep well pump and a series of five booster pumps. Just for information of the public, this booster station will allow us to take the capacity of this well, which is about 1,200 gallons a minute, and to be able to meet instantaneous demands of nearly 4,000 gallons a minute to help meet peak data man. That's the benefit of that water tank adjacent to it. So it's a more complex station, hence the cost is a little higher. And we would ask your approval to move forward with this and have this completed by next spring.
Any questions or comments?
I'm just curious where we're, where we're paying for that out of?
Out of impact fees. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. I meant to mention that. Culinary water impact fees. Thank you for that reminder.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2022-90, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving a contract with Van Con Inc. for construction of the 2022 Barrow Well House and Booster Station.
We have a motion from Councilman Graff, a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman Graff.
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Item Nine is Resolution 2022-91, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving a contract with Claude H. Nick's Construction Company for the construction of the 2022 Barrow Well House and Booster Station Railroad Bore, presented by Paul Hanson.
Thank you. On this next image that you'll see, you again see the site and you see the yellow ellipse in the top right corner. The power supply for this well house is located on the opposite side of the railroad. There's not existing sufficient power within the residential subdivision to the west. And so we are required to connect to that line. And because of the railroad, they won't let us lay wires across the track for some reason. I don't, can't figure that out. But we have to construct a steel casing under the entire right of way, six inch diameter, and then put a four-inch PVC conduit inside of that. This project was also put out for bid. We received a single bid. The prices, however, seem to be in relation. By the way, you have a copy in your packet of the bid tabulation for this and the prior project. The city is requesting your authorization to move forward with this bore project. It also will be funded by Culinary Water Impact Fees as the source for it. And the contract amount would be $199,032. Again, because they're working underground and sometimes there's things we don't see, we're asking for an additional 5% contingency, which in this amount would be $9,950.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2022-91, a resolution to Twilla City Council approving a contract with Claude H. Nick's Construction Company for the construction of the 2022 Barrow Well House Booster Station Railroad Bore.
I'll second your motion. So we had a motion from Councilman McCall and then a second from myself. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman Graff.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Item Ten is the minutes from Wednesday, September 21st, City Council RDA Work Meeting and Wednesday, September 21st, City Council Business Meeting. Do you want to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion from Councilman Graff, a second from Councilman McCall. Take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman Graff.
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye. That passes 4-0. Item Eleven is our invoices.
Hey, listen adjourned before we do this. Listen adjourned so we don't have to pay the bills.
Oh, yeah. I was like, did I miss something?
We do have a lot to bring to you tonight, so you may want to.
I saw them. I'm like, oh, man, we don't want to pay these.
Okay, the first one is to Nickerson Company for the well pump and motor for the Barrow Well. It is $93,656. And then we're asking for an open PO for Road Salt for this winter season with Broken Arrow for $65,000. And we'll just use that as needed and hopefully we need that a lot. Then there's an invoice to Ken Garf. And this one, I am, let me explain a little bit about this one. We brought this to you September 21st and asked for an, an open PO for two, 2023 Ford interceptors for the police department. And it was for $89,376. And then we couldn't get these Ford interceptors, but we were able to get to Colorado, or Chevrolet Colorado's. And anymore with vehicles, we have to grab them when we can get them that we, they're just really hard to get. So we got the, I had emailed you guys and asked if it was okay to use that PO to get the Colorado's instead of these Ford interceptors, and you agreed to that. So we did use that PO for those vehicles. We are asking though that we get another PO for the Ford interceptors. We have to order these and we're hoping that we can get them within the next 12 to 18 months. That's how far out they are. So we're asking for an open PO for $89,376 to Ken Garf for these interceptors for the police department. Okay, and then we have an invoice for Black and McDonald. For, this is to repair some wires for our streetlights. Um, the copper wire was stolen out of these streetlights. And this is to repair those and it's $81,569.88. And then we have another invoice for Black and McDonald. This, this is for new streetlights at Skyline, $60,492.14. And then the mayor talked about this in the mayor's report. This is to pay off the bond for the property at 1,000 North. So this is to US Bank, $3,666, no, $3,663,525.15.
See, I told you we should, we should have adjourned.
So did the police vehicles take so long because they have to be retrofitted? Or is it just that hard to get any?
It's not even that. It's just, yeah. The dealers are requiring us to have a PO before we'll, they'll even let us order them. And they are just hard to get, really, really hard to get right now.
If it's not one thing, it's another, right?
Yes.
All right, any other questions about the invoices? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion we approve the invoices.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Hanson, a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman Graff.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
And Councilman Brady, I also vote aye.
Thank you.
That passes 4-0. Thanks, Michelle. Item 12 is to adjourn, so we are adjourned at 7:36.